Good evening. First, we are so pleased that so many of you have come here to tonight. On behalf of the Select Board and all of the town employees, we wish you all a happy holiday season and a very healthy new year. Before I turn tonight's hearing over to our moderator, Mike Abernathy, I have a request. I ask that you all practice careful listening and be respectful to everyone who speaks tonight, especially if there are ideas that you don't agree with. I think it's really important. Having said that, on to talk about what we're actually here for tonight. Tonight is a secret ballot referendum titled 30A NRS 252285, requiring that the municipal officers hold a public hearing on the subject articles to be voted on by secret ballot referendum. The purpose of a public hearing is to inform the voters of the subject matter of the referendum and allow them the opportunity to discuss, to discuss it. It is intended as a substitute for discussion that would spur that the article will be voted on in the local town meeting. So the two questions that will be voted on next month. Number one, to see if the town vote to authorize the Select Board to renew the State Street Reservoir site with the community shelter learning place, also known as the Round School, for an additional 10 years, beginning on June 2026, under the same terms and conditions as the current lease, which was dated since 2016. The current lease was dated June 2016, and it was for a term of 10 years. Under Article 3 renewal terms, it states that the tenant shall have the option to renew this lease for an additional 10 years, provided that the town will vote to extend the lease. The tenant has requested to renew the lease. Therefore, the town is obligated to vote on extending the lease for another 10 years. Question two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate, enter into a lease or consecutive leases for a town document vendor portion of M21-L05 for total lease terms of up to five years. The terms of the lease will be negotiated by the Select Board. The most recent lease was dated April 18, 2023, and had an expiration date of April 17, 2026, unless sooner terminated. The lease had an option to be extended for another two years. Recently, the Select Board terminated the lease due to default by the tenant. The Select Board is asking for authorization to seek RFPs for a group vendor to be able to be up and running for the 2026 season. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Mike Abernathy, who has agreed to be tonight's moderator. Mike, before it's yours.
So I have been asked to moderate this meeting because I am very neutral on both of these issues. I don't have a stake in either of these things. So I'm also here, besides being a supporting, to help ensure that the meeting runs efficiently. So I will need to work as moderator to ensure that our meeting is efficiently, smoothly, productively, and consistently, hopefully. All right, so before we begin that, just a couple procedural things. As the moderator, if you wish to be recognized to speak, you need to raise your hand, and this includes people online as well. If you raise your hand. Beyond that, once you raise your hand to speak, you are not allowed to speak until the chair, the moderator, recognizes you. I will indicate that you recognize to speak. You may then stand up, please state your name, and let us know what you were positioned in. Beyond that, are we going to do time at all?
There's good amount of people here. I think we can start up too.
Okay. Due to the number of people here who may want to speak on both of these issues, a two-minute time limit for question and position have been proposed. So we will be operating with that. There will be a timekeeper, and I will also be explaining the time myself to make sure that everything stays fair. Finally, just as far as expectations that I, as moderator, have for this meeting, this was alluded to a little bit earlier. But first of all, please be respectful. If you are disrespectful or your questions lapse into personal abuse, I won't stop from continuing to ask for questions. So please be respectful with everybody in the room. Select Board, myself, people asking questions, your fellow town members, please be respectful. Second thing, please be relevant. So if you have something to add to the discussion, please be relevant to the issue that is being discussed. If you're talking about question two, about the food dock lease, and you want to tell us an amazing story about how you had bad plans there nine years ago, that's amazing, or it's a wonderful story, it's not relevant, so please move on from that. Third thing, do not be repetitive. The first person likes a position for X reason. Fantastic. The second person stands up. I also agree with X position for the same reason. Right? We don't need to hear a third person say the exact same thing. If it's a third person stands up and is like, "I agree with these same reasons," plus an additional one, awesome, discussion keeps moving. So please be respectful, relevant. Don't be repetitive. All right, with that in mind, are we ready to begin this special meeting? As Chair recognizes.
Hi, my name is Tim Moore. I'm an architect and the architect of Robert from the Round School. I'm also a board member from the Round School. And the first question is, would we, I would appreciate if we'd be able to make something of a presentation. I'd like to talk initially what we think is the case with this, to do a hearing, and then also, Whitney, the director, would like to make a presentation regarding the school's mission going forward.
Any objections to?
About the two minutes?
So there is, so there is two, okay, so two minutes? That's fine, if you can do it in two minutes.
Two minutes. Yeah, I don't need two minutes.
So if it's two minutes, two minutes, fantastic.
That's fine, okay. So, everybody, you hear me all right?
There's a microphone at the center.
I just want to be able to see everybody.
You cannot?
The first issue for us is basically the placement of the law, obviously. Are we only going to be in method terms? Oh, it's like that. Okay, sorry. The first issue for us, obviously, is the first and only issue, is the renewal of the lease. And our understanding of the contract is that if we have met the terms, as outlined in Article 9 of the contract, that we've met all those, you have to go ahead and renew the lease. It's not a discussion, it's, this is our option. It's our option in the contract. And the thing that also seems a bit off base here right now is that this should not be a referendum. There is no mention of referending the contract. The contract is set based on agreement and our approval, I should say, your approval, our achieving the contract obligations, which we have done, and therefore it's your law. It's a must, a shall, and we don't feel that it should be above or referendum. It's not in the contract to do so. Therefore, I think referending is something that's got to be. So that is our position. And just don't want to understand why. Thanks. And Whitney, as the director, would like to talk about the future of the school.
All right, thank you, Chair. Your next question.
Good evening. I am Whitney Smofield. I'm a project director at the Round School. I'm glad that everyone has come out. Excuse me, everyone has come out this evening. Our major goal at the Round School is to create and sustain a thriving, year-round community in Castine for years to come. We will achieve these goals and the continuity of education and care for our youngest children through community collaboration, advocacy, and resources. We will support the essential services provided by the Round School for the growth and prosperity of the whole child, the whole community of Castine. We will actively meet and collaborate with community organizations for the benefit of the community's youngest members and to strengthen the flow of information and resources. We are actively working with the Withersall Library, with the Blue Hill Library, with the Castine Merchants Association, and we'd like to strengthen our relationships with the Adams School, the Penobscot Community School, the Main Maritime Academy, the Castine Education Committee, the Hatchhounds, and the Castine World Club. We must make these connections in order to create and sustain a thriving, year-round Castine. Thank you very much for your remarks and your consideration. I invite you all to come up to school and see what we are doing. Kim Turless has a few letters of support for our program. And I would just urge you all to keep. And please come see what we're doing. It's really quite an amazing place, and I invite you all in. Volunteer, support the programs that we have working now. I'd love to see each and every one of you come up and get involved with what we are doing on the hill. It is a wonderful, wonderful, safe and nurturing environment for the youngest of our community. Thank you very much.
My name is Emily Turless. I have been asked to read a letter from a lady who cannot be here this evening, as she says. Yes, sorry. This letter was written by Kate McMahon and Gregory Ruddick, who are parents of a child who is currently attending the community learning place. Dear Castine community and Select Board, I would like to voice my support for the community place retaining their lease of the State Street Reservoir site. As many of you know, I am new to Castine after having been hired as the director in the Castine Historical Society in June of this year. I am a native Mayner, but have been living and working in the Washington DC area for 13 years. My husband Greg and I have a three-year-old daughter, Wynona, who partially motivated our relocation to Maine. We wanted her to get a chance to grow up in a smaller community and experience the childhood in the great state of Maine. When I was approached about this job by the board of the CHP, one of the big selling points was CCLP. It is just a few minutes away from CHP, and I was so impressed with the high quality of the facility and staff that we met with the board. Whitney has thrived being at CCLP since June. Her language development has improved by leaps and bounds. The CCLP staff has encouraged her love of cooking, which has influenced our play at home. She loves to make recipes with me. She is learning how to write her letters, and I believe she is on track to be an early reader. They have fostered her love of art as well, and she loves all the various activities that incorporate art and other kinds of learning. In short, her experience at CCLP has been so formative to her early development. She has also formed extremely strong bonds with her peers and with the staff. She talks to us all the time about her teachers, what they did that day, and all the fun that she had at CCLP. Every time I pick her up, she says, "Mommy, I had..." I looked at the other daycare facilities between Castine and our home Bangor. There is nothing, nothing in really big letters out there that comes close to the quality of the facility and the curriculum at CCLP and the ballot. Either the facilities are rundown, have extremely high student-teacher ratios, or are more than twice the cost. Castine needs a childcare facility if the town wants to continue to foster an environment that is welcoming to people with young children. Childcare in general is hard to come by, and quality childcare that is actually educational, supportive, and fun is even harder to find. If Castine needs CCLP, it will negatively impact our family in a myriad of ways, most importantly, disrupting the great path that Wynona is on with her education and social development. I fear we will never be able to find a facility that even comes close to what we have found here. I am indebted to the staff at CCLP for the ways in which they have cared for Wynona and our family. Thank you. Kate McMahon and Gregory Ruddick.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I mean, you can tell as a board member here. And I just wanted to respond to the first comment about the process for the lease renewal. Looking at the lease on Page 3, Article 3, Term, it does state that the tenant shall have the option to renew this lease for an additional 10 years, provided that the town shall vote to extend the lease. So it's more than just the tenant expressing their interest in renewing the lease. That's really... And once they've done that, as that part of the lease continues on, once the tenant... So I wanted to just clarify that this was laid out that the vote is a requirement of this renewal process. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
In March 2025, page 11 on page of the Mid-Post Killer, we have a broken system in childcare. It highlights local parents that are realliding ways to find living spots within the suburbs. Quivers struggling to meet demand and with a hundred feet staff who face a state blessing. They talk about how statewide made is known for having one of the lowest rates to pay for childcare for routine providers. That's childish, and I don't think that most people considering allowing that childish behavior are not above all, isolated from that statewide condition. Second of all, the word "town", there's no definition section in the contract in the round lease. The word "town" is used consistently throughout the lease. And at the very end, where it has the town, the town signing round, it says "town select board". If you take it to a warrant, what you do is remember her obligation, her right to renew sprinkles, boy, without any power. Because they can mitigate this. That is not what the vote is for, the vote is to the Select Board to determine whether or not she has met the obligations as required in that renewal section. So you meet, you discuss whether she's met the obligations, and then you vote. It's almost a performance on the verge. There is, the "town" in Section 3 on Page 3 does not mean something different than every other word with "town" that is in that round lease. If it meant the voter... If that goes directly, "town" had its appearance throughout the round lease. So those are parties who had an obligation to clarify by "town", in that section, they met the voters. They did not do that, so they did not do the voter stuff.
Thank you, Speaker. Would like to be right next?
Hi, I'm Rachel Sawyer. I'm here tonight, not just as a parent thinking about my school summer pair, but as someone who genuinely believes that good childcare is a foundation for a healthy, thriving community. CCLP was created with vision and passion with Nancy and W. G. And for that, we are grateful. The building is truly beautiful. The caregiving is about more than a wall set building. It's about the people and time. It's about how children are treated, how caregivers create a safe and nurturing space, and how consistently they deliver care that parents can trust. There's no question that our peninsula and surrounding areas are in desperate need of childcare. Every facility within an hour is full, with long wait lists. And yet, the only center I can find with available slots is the one we're discussing tonight. The center seeking a 10-year lease from the town. I believe the reason there is consistent availability at CCLP despite the high maintenance there is that the trust we seek as parents has been repeatedly broken. After the 2022 staff exodus that left families suffering without care, many families, mine included, chose to give CCLP another chance when they reopened. Within a few months, I personally witnessed several concerning incidents, some involving my own child, and we eventually had to find care elsewhere. And I know I'm not alone. Many families have raised similar concerns and several complaints have been filed with DHHS. During one investigation, we spoke directly with the person handling the case. They were very clear that DHHS' priority is to keep facilities open whenever possible. Their standard is minimum compliance. Ours as a town should be higher. I want to be clear, I fully support utilizing that space for childcare, but a 10-year lease renewal under the current terms is more than an extension, it's an endorsement. And after multiple chances to considerable goodwill, CCLP has not shown it can be the standards our families deserve under its current leadership model. Please consider whether continuing this lease under its current terms is actually in the best interest of the children, of families, of the long-term health of their community, or whether we ought to look to open the round. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Andrew Hartford. I have a statement I'd like to... Dear Select Board and members of the community, I wish to share my family's appreciation and support for the community childcare learning place. Both, my wife Kate and I have supported this CCL since its inception, and our three children have gained measurable benefit from CCL. It's forced to rely on footbrakes and the interactions with teachers and staff that they began attending. As parents, we feel that the CCL is a safe environment, and we have never had to worry about our children's safety. For working parents sending our kids to children, childcare, that's the most important thing we can ask. Our eldest son began in the winter of 2018. Our daughter begins in September. And our youngest son began in the winter of 2021. Childcare in the peninsula is a challenge, and our experience, we have driven hundreds of miles and needed to rely on charity and practice to support the community. Solutions that have always been less than ideal. Since CCLP opened, we have supported its plan, rolling our children, participating in its governance, and supporting its fundraising. CCLP has been childcare often program. Our children have grown in the company of CCLP teachers and staff, Nancy, W. G., Margaret, Caroline, Ren, Jamie, Anna, Ale, Whitney, and others, all of whom helps children to learn, play, and be a part of our community. Our children have learned a great deal about interacting socially, many with many people of CCL. Firstly, I think this is one of the most important social life skills they've acquired with their teachers, classmates, parents, and other volunteers. Our children feel supported, cared for, and loved by them. I wish I to share a few other points that our family goals of CCLP has met. Our children return home with art crafts, stories of Lego and model construction. They have written, acted, and produced plays. Our children have undirected play with their classmates. They have not returned home once from CCLP talking about what they saw on television, computer screen, mobile phone, or web. Our children have had aged appropriate play and learning tasks. They have been outdoor playing all year round, including sledding.
I'm sorry, Speaker, you gave your time. Would you like to finish your last thought?
Sure. I continue to support CCLP, and we expect that they have been sponsored with the community. They have done developments in infant and toddler care. And we have a gap in the annual program. So we do support CCLP very much. Last thought is that I am surprised that this is coming to a town referendum. As in past practice, the selection of the second question, it has been the ethical of the town's business. And I impurge the Select Board to return to past practices and not bring in new elements of community vote.
Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, sir. We'd like to have the town attorney speak to matters of law. Perfect, because we're at a position to sit with the matter of law.
Fantastic.
Mary, are you there?
I'm here, yep. Hello?
Were you able to hear the questions about, some questions of whether the Select Board should be... whether it should be a vote on it or not?
So I believe this was addressed a few minutes ago, which is the Section 3.2 of the contract talks about that there's an option to renew, and the town has to vote. When you see that language in a town meeting town, that means town meeting is voting. If they wanted the Select Board to vote, it would have said the Select Board shall vote. But it doesn't. It says the town shall vote, which means the town meeting shall vote.
Rather than the governing body?
Excuse me?
I said rather than the governing body, that'd be the language that would maybe be in there otherwise. It's slurred.
It would have said the Board of Selectmen. But instead, it says the town. And that means town meeting. This is a, I mean, it's the, just generally, in a town meeting town, that town meeting town is the legislative body. They control everything unless they specifically give the Select Board the ability to do something. And when it comes to the sale or lease of town property, that is a town meeting jurisdiction. And so this is a significant lease. It's a 10-year lease, and it makes, it's not unusual at all for something like this to go to town meeting.
Thank you, thank you. My question, though, is if you go to the contract under "town", it said "Board of Selectmen", it does not say "town" in the contract. 12.7 notices.
The town and the party to this agreement is the Town of Castine. So when you see capital T-Town, it's the Town of Castine. It's not the Board of Selectmen.
But if you go to 12.7 notices...
So I understand. I'm not here to, I don't think it's the appropriate time to debate. We can debate otherwise. I will say that as the town attorney, I feel confident that this is the town meeting vote.
So let's just play the stereotype. So let's say if you let a certain company and the town goes to define the renewal of the lease. And so if you read the four corners of the document in it, that it would mean that the town would have to pay for our investment. And that's a pretty substantial thing. So the board is not worried, it's probably, that's just against the terms of occasion of the vote. So the board is not worried, it's currently, that's against the certification of the votes. And then the board shall also need the amount of money that's to happen.
Where do you get the money from? There's a provision in there.
Termination.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, I'm Brock Newer, and I'm grateful you're all behind me. Hi, I'm Brock Newer, and I'm happy to be here, happy to hear the happy thoughts about friends. I'm afraid that this cost begin, that's how you say her name, is incorrect, very clearly incorrect, about her assumptions. As she kept reading through the lease, she would have found on 9.1 that the town is in eye and true, it's selectmen, period. Black and white, it's the selectmen. It's not the town of Castine and a thousand citizen votes, it's the selectmen, period. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Peter Lewis. I live here, works on Oliver. Just wanted to start first, just kind of know a little difference from what I thought about.
Yeah.
I'm an advocate, just a little bit different than what I thought I was going to talk about, but I think, just want to make clear that we're talking about character children here. And we're debating whether or not the town should vote over this, and there's concern over whether the town would vote for a particular person to be given this lease, so maybe we should be looking for something better, or at least seeing what alternatives are out there. I'm glad to hear that people are having good experiences with the Round School. I just wanted to present a scenario or case for Elizabeth and I, where we had a very different one, just to make sure that everything in this point was out there. My son, my son went to school for eight, maybe seven and a half hours, two days. Without going into detail, I thought I had a little too much detail. I had walked in the door the moment I did, it could have been the hospital or much worse. I didn't want to know, I'm happy to show the details, or I got more time, I'm happy to do so. We ultimately had to scramble, we drive 17 miles to Orleans for daycare, 17 miles back for work, 17 miles back to Orleans, 17 miles back here. One of the reasons we decided to sell in Castine was the Round School, maybe no doubt about it. It's the only time around here that's done something like this. We won't be here eight years, I'm going to be. There's a living, but the town really had, for a second, to be more grateful as a father, that the town decided to do that. The execution has been less than once ultimately necessary. Ultimately, what we're looking for in a daycare as a parents is, number one, that child's physically safe, number two, they're emotionally safe and well, and number three, maybe optional, what the parent wants, their child's development to be supported as well. And there's the most important years in that. For us, the Round School fell short of that mark, through and through, many of the hours. Our son now goes to home in North Jersey. No, or don't go home, it's been around for, since 1970. They serve those in the feed first, or I forgot the motto, they're beautiful a lot. I already described that this rundown, resource deprived, but oh, oh, so much love.
I'm sorry, Speaker, that's your time, I was like to finish.
Yeah, it's our experience, it's been the exact opposite experience, the Round School, and I hope the town will vote to not renew the lease, and see what other options are out there. And I hope the town still pursues state care. It's a wonderful thing that town's done, and I hope no one feels like this was a failed experiment. I hope that the town doesn't give up on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a statement on this issue.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow on the gentleman who just spoke, he talked about being in the Round School with his child for eight hours. Based on that eight-hour experience, he has determined that the Round School does not meet the qualifications that he decides to set. He also drives in, oh my God, 17 miles for Orleans? Well, have you ever gone to Antiferns? It's further than 17 miles, which is where we all drive to get our groceries. The town of Castine is in desperate need of attracting young people into this community. And the way you do that is by providing quality childcare, which we have through the Round Hill School, provided. It is the future of this town. And I've talked to several. We cannot be a suburb community. We cannot be a bunch of people who have more money than they know what to do with. We have to encourage young people to come to this town. And one of the ways to do that is through childcare.
Can you introduce yourself, sir?
Sorry. Hey, sir.
Can you state your name?
Yes, my name is Gene Feggar. I live in Mercury. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I misspoke 17 minutes. Actually, for lots of miles. And, yeah, we pulled our son because there was a huge safety concern. They didn't know, they gave our son water, because hypothermia, comatose coma, brain damage. Yeah, you don't give, you don't give him water, and I just happened to walk him a second or three. And I didn't report it at the time because I was worried that we couldn't find him to go to care. I was worried that other people were relying on this place, and I wanted to make sure they were taking care of their workplace issue where we were, where we had no care, and their jobs were good, too. And I didn't do it, I feel guilty about it ever since. I apologize to those families that they have been at risk, and tells them I've supported it. So, yes, eight hours is all it took for us to know that it wasn't a safe place, and here not to work, and just have experienced some of that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Bobby Vine, I'm a visitor. My respect, that will not violate, I will go three minutes, because I can tell you who else is on three minutes, so it's fair respect. While we in this room may disagree on something, I think there are several on which I suspect agreement would be unanimous. I will name three. First, childcare is vital to the families who live here and to others who've come here to work, for institutions like M and A and other local employers, and thus childcare is vital to Castine itself. Castine is very fortunate to have a first grade facility for this purpose, thanks in large measure to the hard work and determination of Nancy and W G Sayer, assisted by so many others in this community, with Kim and Bill for us at the top of that list. Third, Castine is a town built on a solid base of friendship and positivity, which makes the not-so-positive observations and firsthand experiences, note, not hearsay, these parents had tried to meet, and you've only heard a few, and there are many, but makes the observations and recommendations of these and other parents so important to the decision before the voters next month. I will note that there are many other parents wanting to be here tonight. The current numbers also reflect a woefully underutilized facility with five full-time children in a place capable of many multiple go-backs. Even more striking is that in this local area, similar programs have waiting lists, and by the way, face similar staffing. I think it is fair to say that while the town of January, a very large component of those families who need and want quality childcare, have already voted with their feet by walking away from the program at the Round School. The town decision in January provides, on the one hand, the fact that Sayer and the nodes who have worked to bring it to where it is today, and also provides the chance to address the concerns raised over time by parents and other residents with respect to matters such as responsiveness to families, operational stability, leadership structure, et cetera. Providing the opportunity to consider and re-fame such a vital program requires
Thank you. Amen, was two minutes and 10 seconds from his job. Anybody else like to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
If we want to leave, I have a lot of stories of personal feelings that I will go into, but I just have two questions. One is for Nancy and W G, and one is for Mary, if she's still there. The one question for Nancy and W G is to preface, like, I appreciate so much everything that you have done, and there's also a strong sentiment in the community that it's time for new leadership. So my question to you is, would you be willing to step down from the board and let new leadership come in to run the nonprofit, I don't see three, community childhood learning place organization, so that, in my view, that could enable a yes vote if there were new leadership on that board? I think it would be easier for everybody involved if we could, like, keep the consistency with all of the licensing and paperwork and the renewal, and it could be a yes, but we need new leadership. It's like a wide, late help view, from my experience. The question to Mary is, so if you don't mind answering that after, that would be great. My question to Mary is, on a lease option to renew, is, are the terms of the lease negotiable at that point? I think there's a misunderstanding in the group that an option to renew means it must be under the same terms. I don't believe that's true. I think it's an option to discuss a renewal under potentially different terms. So I'd like to hear from her, if she doesn't mind to clarify that. Thank you.
Could we take the answer from the second question?
Hi, thank you. So this, the, that paragraph 3.2 of the contract does not talk about renegotiating terms. So it talks about being able to have the option to renew this lease for an additional 10 years, and then the town votes to extend the lease. They find that the tenant has been, is continuing in full compliance with all the terms, and the town consents in writing to the renewal. So there is no language in there about renegotiating the terms, it talks about renewing this lease. I just, while I, just, just one more point of clarification while I have the microphone, there was a gentleman earlier talking about section 9.1, and I just wanted to clarify that, because I actually think that that's a, it actually helps to explain something. Article nine is about termination. So what article nine says is that the town, the town, capital T town, acting through its selectmen may terminate the lease. The lack of that language of acting through its selectmen when it's talking about renewal just clarifies that it is just about town meeting, that the town, that the select board does not have the authority to renew the lease without a town meeting vote. So just making that clarification. Thanks.
Thank you. And then the first question I believe is directed towards you, or you asked that?
Leadership from the board will not affect mistakes made by staff in our absence. We are not on the center every minute of the day. When staff makes mistakes, it's a part of it, we don't like it. Nancy's trying to reinforce it, getting people to behave according to the D H H S rules. What those rules, when staff makes mistakes, it's not because of the leadership, it's because the staff didn't know exactly what to do, especially with the paperwork. Four months was longer, there was not enough food provided by the parents to keep the child content, and they made a mistake. Had nothing to do with us, it had to do with the staff. And this has been a problem with trying to train staff, bring them up to speed, let them know what's developing, how to lead appropriately. It's a huge learning curve. And occasionally, there will be a mistake, and we apologize for mistakes being made. But changing the leadership will not change the nature of operation. Because the board is not who manages the center. Director of the center is supposed to manage the staff. And getting good management, good staff is an artificial problem, and I apologize for that. But training is difficult, learning is difficult. And so changing leadership won't do anything.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Debbie Bonn, and I lived in Castine. I do not have a pony in this race, so I do not prefer against, but I do have a logistical question. So before I moved back to Castine, I worked for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and my job was to teach procurement law to public officials and to public sector employees. And so I'm a bit of an expert in that area, and not feel like this, but it was my job. And so my question is, forget about consistency, why are we entering into a 10-year agreement when if issues were to arise, and I'm not saying they are or they aren't, but if issues are to arise that do not meet the level of breach of contract, but it could be concern, there could be other issues that may or may not be included in your Ts and Cs in your contract? I don't go in contract for so long. Massachusetts is not Maine, so I'm not trying to say that, but in Massachusetts, you are not allowed to sign a public contract if public money or public property was being used three years unless you had a mandatory vote from your governing body, whatever your governing body was, select labor, council, whatever. So I would say, no matter what happens, in me as a community, we need to question, why are we entering into such long-term contracts where we may or may not be able to release ourselves if something were to arise? So that's my only question, while.
Thank you, Speaker. Yes, ready, nice.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Sarah. I'm curious, I'm sure that briefly, just need.
If this particular lease were not to be renewed, and this is a question for you guys and Mary as well, would, if there were to be a new lease, would there be an opportunity to write new terms? And then if there were a new lease with new terms, could anyone then apply for that new lease?
Mary, please.
Sure, so, yes, if this, if this lease were not renewed, it gives the opportunity to start from scratch with potentially this, this same operator, potentially somebody else. I imagine the town would go through an RFP process, but if this lease is not renewed, this lease is terminated, and there's no need to, to recognize any of the terms.
Follow up.
Just wanted to do some active listening. If I understand what Mary said, we have an opportunity now We have an opportunity now to write a new lease that could maybe be. Have a shorter term or kind of be more in line with. Our goals and the community, um, and how we want to be able to be nimble or adaptive or respond to needs shorter time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Following up on this, very important issues that will have to address. What is something different about it? Um, licensing, first of all, you have to find an appropriate vendor. Um, and the licensing and inspections and everything that take years. And that will also be difficult to find whether or not that's, that's the same as investment. That's the interest rate of investment. It's ground lease. It's not a silver lease. So there is a question as to what the town has to know or, or she has rights to. As another woman, this is on her and this community did several years ago. When the same kind of gaslighting was going on at the spare event. Um, where she was kind of forced out of the, uh, bottom of the building, I would ground lease. After they let her, the town let her invest her money in the building, the building, she pulled over. Okay, so, uh, we can't ask people to put in their, their money. Build a building for us, fill it and then take it from there. So there's going to have to be some sort of financial transfer or she's going to have to take what she got.
Thank you. Yes, sir. In speaking to the licensing agencies, they assured us that they could do something within four months.
I just want to. Whenever we deal with any issues of law, we do our homework. We speak to the attorney at length because we don't want to sit up here. And do something that's illegal or not correct. So, you know, I really take exception to what we say, Rob. We did our homework. We have spoken to Mary at length. I am not an attorney. Roberta is not an attorney. Amy is an attorney, but not a practicing one. Is that correct, Amy?
That is the most.
That is the most. Okay. Um, so, so we rely on our professional expertise to guide us. Whether it's an engineer or hydrologist or an attorney. Okay. So I just want you to know that we're very careful to get the information that we need to make these kinds of decisions.
And if you want to ask, that to answer Anne's question perhaps, article 10 writes upon termination. This is what happens.
Okay, we're right. Okay, so I'm reading from the lease. Tenant agrees that upon expiration of the initial term or renewal term of this lease. Or as a result of the tenant default, the lease premises and any improvements there are will be promptly delivered to the town. Upon the termination or expiration of the initial term or renewal term of the city. All rights of the tenant hereunder to possession of the premises under this agreement shall be eternal. It is on page 12, article 10. I'm reading from this.
Uh, yes, I'm ready. So I just wanted to say that I don't appreciate being called out like that on select. That is not how the select works.
Thank you. All right, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Casey. Oh.
Hi, Casey Prater. Um, I just wanted a clarifying question about who, like the building was built by Nancy W G S, by their leadership. But I know there was a nonprofit that was formed and the community contributed significantly to that. Um, the question that came up about that they would be owed money. My understanding that the community came together to fund a lot of that and verify that if possible, anyone that you.
So can you clarify that, um, question about the?
I don't know that the select board can comment on that because I think that question and I'm hearing the question is getting to the structure of the organization. Which is as we know, the round school. So. Did you, I think they might be more equipped to answer that question in the structure or, but I don't think we have that answer. That doesn't involve us.
Are you asking for a response from me?
I think Casey was asking that kind of question and I don't think we are the ones that have the answer to the question.
Sure. So are the, the question, Casey, what is your question?
What parents does that you would be owed money for the building?
Uh, no, we would not be owed money. The 501(c)(3). We cannot profit from this nor any board member can profit from a 501(c)(3). That's what a 501(c)(3) means. There is no way and there is no compensation. My husband and I have put in over $200,000 into this. We are not asking for any money to be returned to us. That was put in for the benefit because we love children and because we believe that families need support. 19% of your children under 19 age in this community are in the state of poverty, in this town are in poverty. We are here to try to help families, not to hinder them. I don't want any money. I don't want a plaque. That has someone has suggested, give me a plaque and you'll go away. No, I don't want any of that. I want us to provide for our children, our youngest members. That's all I want.
Thank you. Any additional speakers, questions, comments on this topic? Yes.
Hi, I'm Kieran Ellen and I just want to follow up on a couple of, um, points that were brought up, which made me think about some additional ideas for the town. Um, the tenure visa agreement is extremely long. It doesn't give you flexibility and I agree that, you know, it is, you can't necessarily be nimble in a very, uh, bureaucratic process. However, um, you know, if there were five years, that would make sense potentially. And I think to protect the town in some capacity of consideration. I think it also gives us, the town, an opportunity to do an O P that everyone, you know, be part of. And including existing leadership. And we can look outside as well and see what actually does suit the needs of the town going forward. Cause clearly in the room, there are people who are loving and people who aren't. And, and if it is the question of kids and there are kids that aren't, and we see the enrollment so low, we do need to ask ourselves. Are we really serving the right community? So I just really think about that and I want you guys to think about that, that your opportunity, not that this is. You know, blowing up the ship. This is actually looking to improve it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi folks, I'm Mark Moore Jody. Uh, my wife and I have three children who have gone through the round school. Our youngest two are still there. And while I certainly do not want to diminish the concerns, my friends who have older children or have had issues. It's been a very good experience. My family and I could not let the town doubt it. I also recognize how much Nancy W G have done for the town throughout this. I've known them almost my life. I was, uh, right out of college during the time we were building it. And I hope the moderator will take this as disparagement, but even 10 years ago, W G was not a one man. And I remember up on the roof, putting the center together. I understand that there are a lot of concerns. What concerns me in my opinion, as well as other families who have their kids there, is continuity care. So I want to ask this, in the event the lease doesn't renew, what's our plan? Are we going to open a gap in childcare town? You know, there are, there are certain, it sounds like things that the community wants to change in the lease. I understand that. But we're, uh, we're going to be a creek. We have nowhere to send our kids and our families can't afford child care. So what, what are we actually going to?
Thank you.
As we don't know how which way the votes are going to go. Um, assuming for the moment that the vote went down. Um, it's my understanding, under the guidance of our attorney, that we would put out an RFP. For another major operator. Of course, the primary focus of the building should always be childcare. But we have to follow, we have to follow the letter of the law. And, uh, you know, if, if the voters choose to vote us down, or the vote goes down. Then it's our responsibility to immediately react by putting out an RFP and looking for, uh, another tenant.
They have a right to.
Fine. And they also have a right to vote. If the vote goes down, they also have a right to, to put an RFP. So it's, 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 uh, it's a process that we have to follow. Mary, did I, did I describe that accurately?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
While we have, while we have Mary on the line, uh, could you please look at 8.1? And, uh, this pertains to what's being discussed. And I would like, uh, your, your legal opinion on this.
8.1 has to do with eminent domain.
Your question, I'm not sure. He asked her to read the, um, question. I don't know if there's a question. Is she asking a question?
She was asking about 8.1.
And she responded, it refers to eminent domain. So is there a question in that?
If you, then maybe you all need to take a look at 8.1. There's a term, a legal term, maybe I'm sure it's called unjust enrichment. And also if you notice your 8.1, is it on the, on page 11, it says. The town contains allocate, allocated to the senate lease holders' interest in improvement. So you, there's a, there's more involved than just kicking us out and moving on.
Can I respond?
Yes, please.
I think, I don't actually want to respond because I think it's better to have Mary respond.
And that's what I was asking.
I don't think Mary understood your question, but perhaps Mary could explain eminent domain, unjust enrichment. And the circumstances that that part of the lease envisions. And how it's different from if this lease is not renewed and what the lease says happens to the property in that instance. If I'm understanding where this question conversation is going. Mary, could you help us with that, please?
So I, I just, the article eight is condemnation. It's, it doesn't relate to what we're talking about right now. It relates to if, uh, another entity came in and exercised, it is a, it's typical in leases to have a condemnation provision. That says like, you know, in the event the federal government comes in and condemns this property, this is how we're going to handle it. That's what that is talking about. Article nine is talking about termination of the lease, which is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about expiration of the lease. The article that applies here that was read earlier is article 10, which is rights upon termination or expiration. And that is guides what the situation is if this were to, if this were to not be renewed. That's the governing section.
So is there a scenario where the town was not doing this lease with the rounds would be selected for a new lease that are different terms? They provide accountability there. It's a scenario where the town would say, we want to renew this lease, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing lease that the rounds, right?
There only are a few.
Yeah. It seems to me like this lease is perfect. Perhaps it's worth a lease for this name. I also just noticed we're talking a lot of time, talking about the lease and not a lot of time talking about what's best for the use.
Thank you. And, yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Mary. Uh, let's assume that the lease is not renewed on the same terms.
I, if you have a, if you have a question for me, I need a microphone. I can't. I, I can't hear you very well unless you use the microphone.
Afternoon. Is, what is the lease does not renew?
I, I, sorry, by the zoom, I can't really understand you. There's a lot of echo. I do need you to use the microphone, please.
Hi, Mary. Um, let's assume that the lease does not renew. I think it's misheard. Um, let's assume that the lease is not renewed. Um, what is the procedure for having, excuse me, an alternate operation in the building? Um, I've heard that maybe, um, it would go to RFP. But who decides the usage of that, that particular lease area in that property in that building?
So if there's a, if this does not renew, there would, uh, likely be an RFP for a new tenant for that building. And then the.
What kind of RFP? And I'm assuming that if this.
So let me, let me, let me answer your question. Okay. Um, so there would be an RFP for a new tenant for the building. And then if there were, um, a new tenant chosen, there would be a new, um, lease that was written up. That, and that lease would then go back to town meeting. So the, the town meeting would ultimately be voting on the new tenant and the new terms of the new lease. But the, um, the board would be choosing someone.
Thank you. Isn't there a precursor though to decide the usage of the property? Before it goes out to an article for a tenant?
Uh, that's up to the board of selectmen. If they want to first have a town meeting vote as to how that property would be used. It seems more efficient to, um. Go out for RFP, see what comes in and then, um, go to town meeting to approve it, but it's up to the board.
Okay, so the board is deciding how, what the best use is for the.
No, also, no, ultimately it will go to town meeting vote and it could, you know, if people didn't like the, the, if you didn't like the way that was being proposed to be used, you would reject that lease.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The municipality has public property. The municipality can determine what that public property can and cannot be used for. So if the community votes determining this lease. But says we want that building to be used for daycare, after school activities, education, need alike. Then the select board, with drawing up the requests for proposals, would stimulate. That the use of that building will be for X, Y, and Z. And a vendor would be interested, be considered, would have to meet that request for proposal. If they come in and say, I want to create a new ice rink, they would be not. they would be non-responsive because the town aren't answering this week. The town is asking for educational vendor. So the town, if we, the town, voted no, then the town would say, we are not renewing the contract. However, we want, the request for proposals will be put out for a new vendor, which WG and Nancy would have every right to put in unless the town struck them off because they did something wrong. Then the town can stipulate usage. So you don't have to worry about a strip mall coming into the round building if the town doesn't want that. So that is what an RFP does. It stipulates what that property is to be used for, what the terms and conditions for that property and that vendor would be. And vendors either meet it, or they don't. And those vendors that do meet that, then the decision is either you choose the lowest priced vendor, or you have other criteria that is set forth prior to the RFP is part of the advertisement. That's our request for proposals.
Thank you for clarification. Yes, ma'am.
So, this town, this public advisor, I met them on a great flexibility. But we had an RFP with responses that were received, where three responses, one was not responsive, and two were responsive, and one was not moved. And one of the non-responsive ones, I thought, that was over too. So they just moved that original RFP to scratch and then rewrite it. They changed things, the textures, the technical parts, so that we could get, or maybe get a little bit more. What I'm not saying now, I'm not saying it's not legal, but what I'm saying is the flexibility, we have a tolerance, just not have a lot of flexibility. And if there's flexibility in the lease.
Yeah, okay, so it's, sorry, I don't mean to start over, as far as the RFP structure. Anybody else would like to speak on this?
I have, I have one more.
Oh, sorry, I have a minute, a second.
So the second point is the flexibility of interpreting the ground lease is various, is, is, I'm just, I'm stunned and amazed by, by how brilliant the interpretation is so conveniently made out. If what the interpretation seems so possible by such and by such and by such, instead of trying to figure out the possibility of the entire ground lease renders her right of renewal absolutely null. She has no right of renewal in the way this, this ground lease is being interpreted by, by town council.
Do you? Yes, sir.
We know our children in the community. Kids, people here, and we very appreciate the work. Who tell, right after the support. This is the programs we appreciate, sayers, done, and all kinds, all the community support, maintaining that absolutely necessary asset. Because despite, as many said, whatever the organization can believe. My one question is simply, if the lease is voted down and the lease is as a result renewed, what is the timeframe in which the current tenants are required to stop operating there? In other words, Mark's question is very pertinent. What's the opportunity for continuity of this servicing community? So is it possible for us to vote this out as we choose? And I'm just thinking, allow the current vendor to continue operating there until another appropriate vendor, perhaps themselves under a renegotiated lease, is found and to satisfy the community or another vendor. But is that an opportunity or is that not possible? So that we don't vote this down and then have 18 months of no in-town care available to anyone? Just a point of clarification, please.
Yes.
I can, can you answer that in part? The current lease is set to continue until June 2026. But I would of what options, if any, would exist to go beyond that and what that might look like in the scenario that Tom.
Do you have any other discussion on question one?
Is, Mary, can you hear me?
I'm, I'm here.
Mary, did you hear Tom Kuto's question about?
I did not. But, so what, I hear, I'm hearing kind of bits and pieces.
If I understand, the question focuses on the continuity of care. And if the lease is not renewed, how long will the current tenant be able to remain? I was mentioning that the lease currently goes until June 15th, 2026.
Yep, I heard that piece.
But if, if another tenant or scenario is not in place by that point, is there, are there options for continuing with the current tenant until there can be some other transition?
There is a holdover provision in the lease that essentially creates a month-to-month lease if the current tenant remains and occupies the space beyond the expiration date.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My only question, following on the tenant has a right to go month to month. Why wouldn't they? If, if the town has basically said to them, we don't want you, you're not here, you're not a part of this program, go home. Why, on God's name, would you stay? Or leave the building? And there will be three months, four months, six months, 10 months, whatever, yeah. In. I don't get it.
Thank you. Sorry, we have an online question.
Hi, this is Kate McMahon. This sort of piggybacks on the last couple of questions. I've been involved in a lot of, when I was a federal employee at Smithsonian, I was involved in a lot of requests for proposals. And that process, in my experience, takes months. So in, in the town of Castine, I guess, my question, this might be for the select board, is how long does an RFP process for something like this take? You know, would we be without childcare potentially for months on end if this lease is not renewed? Thank you.
Good. Yeah. Please start. Mary, could you clarify, what is the, is there a timeline that would be required to follow for an RFP?
I, I can't answer that question. I mean, every, every RFP is different. I don't have the town's purchasing policy in front of me, but it's not a Smithsonian timeline. I will tell you that. I'm sure, you know, you, you, you create the timeline that you think is reasonable. You put in a return date for response dates. I, I can't answer that question. I mean, I, I imagine that, you know, six months is a reasonable amount of time to get a new tenant. But I, you know, the, the, the response period is the response period that you put in the RFP. And that will guide the process.
Great, thank you. Yes, sir. In the response, I have someone who's on her, I can understand. Change, change. Yes.
All right, so. I'm not suggesting to go, go, go either way, chief. But my thought is, is I do believe in all sincerity that the sayers and other people that have leadership of that organization are there for the good of the children and the benefit of the community, importance of that. And unlike a for-profit competitive business, they don't see this as that. So if the town voted to the lease down and we worked with them with a positive goal, whether they wanted to try to renegotiate a new lease for their organization to run the whole of the school, or they had it in some different fashion, or it was going to go to something else, I don't think they're the type of people that, out of spite of the concern that the community wasn't fully supportive, would abandon the kids of the community. And then immediately walk away like somebody went into a for-profit competitive business. I don't know if that's true or not, but I don't think that's how this is thought of. I could be wrong, but I would hope that would be how it's.
They're here, maybe they can answer their question. That's up to them. Thank you.
Like lease, that sort of thing, but so this confounding to me is that this, this was basically an abandoned site for years. Has nothing to do with it, it's basically an attractive nuisance. You know, that at some point, the roof was starting to go. It had, you know, it was full of water. It was just kind of, it was just an entire nuisance, nothing more. And then, you know, Tom was, was the, Jim Goodwin. You know, Nancy was talking about Jimmy.
Jimmy Goodson.
Jimmy Goodson, right. You know, he suggested, hey, this would be a great win-win for both the town and Nancy's desire to get a really valid childcare center going, really in terms of child education. And so, you know, at least 50 volunteers, numerous donors, myself, other people, all pitched in, made it happen. You know, this didn't just spring out of thin air. I mean, people really tried to make this work. I understand there may be some flaws. I don't think they are unreceptive to trying to figure out how to fix those. But I think this just seems like a real ticking of teeth to just say, oh, we're going to take the building now, we know how to do better than you. I, it needs to be propositioned, frankly. We do have somebody that knows a great deal about this. She has that background, as a director. I just think that this just seems kind of honestly short-sighted and kind of mean-spirited. So I just don't understand that. Yes.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I did not want to speak on this. I have spoken enough. There is only one reason that I did this. My poor husband followed behind. I am a true believer in young children. I have given over 50 years of my life to children, young children, and to families. The families that are in here and have voiced your content. I didn't have childcare, but somehow or another, I managed to hold down a full-time job and work on a PhD and write two books while raising my family. I would have loved to have had responsible people to take care of. Yes. To the family that has spoken several times on this. You were, we, you're eight hours, which, and we regretted it. Whitney, would you be able to apologize to them again?
I don't want to apologize. What's the change?
I'm sorry, the same. So actually, this is, if you think this is in plain, you, you, a mistake was made, apology was made. At which point, the thing that you're not all getting is, anytime, and there's lots of people in this room, you have the responsibility to call DHHS. Now, DHHS, the Department of Labor, DHHS, and the unemployment was flooded in 2022 by two staff members and three parents. I call it the murder board. I can take that murder board and link everything back to two people, two or three, two people in this town. And I see some of the faces that are here. The, the point is, if you have a complaint, call and make it. Well, guess what? People call to make complaints. We had multiple, multiple inspectors in that building. I was interviewed over and over. But the bottom line, it all came back and they said there was nothing. But this town has continued to perpetuate. Oh, they did this. Oh, they did that. But the bottom line, DHHS, that's what they do for a living. And they came in and said, no, it wasn't the case. Now, why do we keep saying this? If you've got a complaint, call. Please. But the problem, and so everything was resolved, but you have, some of you have not let go of it. Your complaints, not, some of your complaints go back to 2022. That was almost, now, six, what? Five, six years.
You're saving your time, but to get to your point.
But my point is, this is you're willing to throw out the baby whist to sing, for whatever, how that saying goes. And that's exactly what you're doing. If the mistake is made, report it, please. But don't throw away a beautiful program. The parents that are there love it. And I have no problem with this. Absolutely not. And frankly, some of you have made my life miserable and my husband miserable. You have spread false rumors and I'm tired of it. Thank you.
And thank you. Can we have a question from a line participant?
Apparently, they, they've taken down the.
Okay, so no online response. Anyone else in the room?
No, wait.
Oh, wait for the bat.
There is one.
Oh, great.
Is it okay?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Michelle Robinson. So I, I want to make sure that I heard something correctly. If, if the lease doesn't get renewed and an RFP goes out, and let's just say you give three months for someone to respond, you know, three-month response period. I think the fire hall response was eight weeks. So eight weeks, three months, you know. Anyway, that needs to then, you go through a selection and an interview process, and that takes some time. Let's say that's a month or two. And then you decide you have somebody that you like, and you have to develop a lease for that someone to sign. And then I just want to make sure this is what I heard. And that is that the lease, the new lease, and the new person, the new operator, would need to then go to a town vote, like, like we do in August, that big town warrant meeting. I think that's what I heard, so I'm just asking for clarification. And then the other item I just wanted to mention is that the 10-year term needs to be looked at relative to the investment. So if you look at the next item up on the agenda, it's to make the food shack that's on the dock a five-year investment. And I would like to think that investment in our children exceeds investment in our bellies. And so 10 years would seem probably an appropriate amount of time. That's all.
You, as far as the first question, sort of the timing of RFPs, do you have an answer to that?
It wasn't, it's not a timing question. It's a, the next, another vendor, if we go out to an RFP and we have, and you select, you go, you go out to an RFP, and whether it's the round school selected or somebody else, whoever is selected would then need to go to a town vote on both the vendor and on the lease. And I guess this goes back to the concern about disruption in service. And perhaps the timing of all of this should be at the end of this renewal, when the town doesn't have an automatic renewal and could start working sooner.
Thank, yes, sir.
I think I can speak to what I believe Mary advised us a short bit ago, that there would be a bridge, if there's a new lease, whether with the current tenant or a new tenant, that it would have to go through the town meeting vote process. I believe that's what you're asking. I believe that's what you're asking. Am I correct?
Yes, and so, and so there would be a lapse in service.
Our town meeting is typically in May, but something like this may be available for a special town meeting that is scheduled at a different time to accommodate that meeting.
Okay, so due to time constraints, if you're willing, we want a second question. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion about question two? Yes, sir.
Is the intact tenant proceeding with a similar, I'd announce, four thousand dollars? It says, is that material to account for, could it be your dollar lease? I think that, I think it's open for discussion. My personal feeling is, it's just me speaking, I like the idea of incentive lease, because we really need someone good there. And if we can create incentives, and I'm not sure where those incentives are, you would have to discuss it. But I, I personally like the idea of incentive lease.
Question two. Any question? Yes, sir. Yeah, Bill Corbett, is, is this a change to what we've done previously with this property? Is this a change in the lease term, or what?
There is no new lease, so, but I think over the years, there's been installations with the different tenants who are working or have responsibility for that property. But there's no new lease in place that would have to be negotiated with a new tenant. But I think, I don't believe we're looking for necessarily a change of lease, if that's what your question is.
Did you tend to, were these one-year leases in the past?
No, I believe this last one was a year.
And what you're asking for us to vote on is what? Five years?
The only thing that I would say, this article here is the exact same article that the town put in on three years ago. The person had a three-year lease with a street option for a two-year renewal. Which is, you know, what I, which like this is saying that it would release, or it says, for term returns for up to five years. The last, the last time, I think that it was when Devon Wall did it, same thing happened. It was, they wrote in initially for three years with a two-year extension, if, if everything worked right.
So no real change in town policy? Thank you. Two, yes, sir.
Yes, I consider it is, whatever the financial we negotiate with these, that's a little bit more friendly if there is more than a dollar, but actually it's a financial bird business operator that reflects the seasonality of this current lease, is money all upfront at the beginning of the year. Seasonal business, there's no worse timing of this calendar cycle than to have to pay any large sums of money in, pretty much in March through June. Cash flow doesn't exist, at least until July fifteenth or so. So I would suggest that we, if it is a sizable amount of money, it's a dollar, different things. But if it's four, five, or six thousand, ten thousand dollars, that should be divided down before we then have a way to be business operator so that they can make it easier with international cash flow of this seasonal business.
One of the things that I would like the select board to consider is, we talk about it being seasonal. And then we bring in a vendor, similar like other vendors, now we have the food trucks. I would like us to maybe think of that space in a different way. And whether that is that they do, quote-unquote, traditional lease or business, what they've done for summer, but then possibly look for a vendor who might see the opportunity to turn that into a late-night spot, where people can get food after eight o'clock at night in Castine, or students on the campus can get food late. We keep thinking of that space strictly as a summer shack, as its own daughter. I think that that facility has more opportunities that could make it a viable year-round business. So I would ask that we maybe think outside the box a little bit and not pigeonhole that to be, well, that's a summer spot, so we're looking for a summer vendor that's going to do the same thing that everybody else does. So that's just something I think we should consider, because then maybe we can find a viable vendor that can search the whole community, not for a summer. But just think about it, we don't have food after eight o'clock, we just found it. And I know, I work in T E factories.
Two, anything else? Yes.
I have concerns about, it's Sandra Parker, I have concerns about that location as a fixed building. And I would encourage people to think of it perhaps as a pad for mobile vendors that then could be summer or late night, if you had the movement. But as we look at the concerns about the waterfront and its vulnerability to the natural world out there, we do advocate that we're concerned thinking that as a pad space as opposed to a building.
Thank you. This, again, my personal opinion, I've been in the group this for fifty years, and I think about this all the time, what could this be? And I agree with both of you that we need to think outside the box and really look at what could this be? And not just a project. And, and so it's, it's something I think about a lot. It's something that we'll discuss when, when we, when we put the RFP out. But I just want to say it's something that is on my mind a lot.
Question two, any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Thank the moderator. We do well, I appreciate it, and I hope everyone feels the same way.